Okay, tonight. To our, uh, Johnson City Council Agenda for regular city council meeting Tuesday, October the 6th, 2020, 6:30 PM. Um, tonight, the invitation will be by Reverend Perry Kelly. Give value to him. Kelly?
Let us pray. Now, Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for your many blessings on our life. Father, we thank you for all that you do for us. We thank you for another beautiful day. Father, we thank you for the time that we've taken here tonight. We gather the city, the leaders here tonight. We gather here to make decisions to better this city, Lord. We pray for them, that you would bless them with wisdom and knowledge and understanding. We pray that you would bless them with unity on the decisions that they make for this community. Father, we pray for this community, and all that we do helps us to honor you. Help us to give you glory, magnify you, and lift you up with everything we can. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, thank you. Perry, uh, while we're thinking about it real quick, wanna, uh, keep the million in your prayers. There's something going on tonight. All right, uh, approval, do we have approval for a minute? Uh, do we have a motion for approval for a minute? The city council meeting on 9/1/2020? All right, uh, Mr. Sigur, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Mr. Staggis? Aye? Aye? All right, and aye. They're all approved. And, um, approval of the meeting for agenda for tonight? Do we have a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the meeting agenda for our meeting tonight.
Mr. Sigur?
Aye.
Mr. Staggis?
Aye.
Aye. How you doing, man? All right, thank you. All right, report of standing committees, uh, Johnson Downtown Revitalization Association. This is Rob.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Downtown Revitalization Association has resumed our monthly member breakfasts at 8:00 AM on the last Thursday of the month at Tocky's Diner. Businesses meet, network, and provide feedback on potential projects and events. The breakfast is free for the ERA members and $5 for others to go towards the meal. Our final networking breakfast for 2020 will be held Thursday, October 29th at 8:00 AM at Tocky's Diner. We also presented three $250 cash prizes to the winners of our Eat Local contest. Thank you to everyone who participated. Let's keep it up and keep our dollars flowing in our local economy. With that mindset, we will continue to encourage shoppers to keep their money in Darlington with our annual Holiday Shop Darlington contest. You have some of the entry forms on your tables there, and there's some at the entrance to the recreation department. Basically, all you have to do is shop at five different businesses between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which will be easy to do, and send in your receipts with an entry form, and you have a chance to win one of three $100 cash prizes. And of course, the more you shop, uh, the more entries you can put in. Uh, there's no limit to the number of entries that you can have. Uh, the only thing that doesn't count is, um, fuel, because we want you to stay in town, uh, prescriptions, and, um, restaurants do count. Um, and you can find more information on the contest at buildupdarlington.org/shopdarlington. Now, due to the governor's executive order regarding COVID-19 and social distancing, the ERA has been forced to cancel several of our events for 2020, including the Bringing Downtown Alive concerts, Scarrow and Square, and our Shop Small Downtown open house. The board has also suspended all our improvement grants until such time that we can resume our fundraising efforts. However, in the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington and its businesses on social media and through our news alert system each week. We reach over 2,700 people through those avenues. We continually update our webpage, web buildupdarlington.org, where individuals can submit information or sign up to receive these alerts. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, outside of the Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce, Nancy Matthews.
Thank you for this time, and again, thank you all for your service to your community. Um, before I begin, I want to remind everyone what the mission of the County Department of Commerce is, and it is the same mission for any chamber of commerce. It's to promote the voice of citizens and to bring value to the community. So, that is everything we do is to promote those things. Now, we've been fortunate, even in this, um, environment, to have four new members. Uh, one is M&amp;M Operations and Virtus Academy. M&amp;M Operations has been on North Main Street, which is called Diamond Runner, and many of you were at the Driven Cut that we held. Thank you for being there. Um, we have a good crowd. Uh, Virtus Academy is a charter school that is on the county line of Florence and Darlington. And there are many Darlington County students that go there as well as Florence County students. And so that was a very positive gathering and a very positive, uh, place in our community. Dr. R.D., the NS Communications and Hypertech 30 minutes are also new members. So, um, we, we live to serve the members and the community. Um, in addition to that, we have a, an existing member who is considering a business after hours of the end of COVID. You know, assuming we can do that with, with social distancing and masks. That would be the announcement for a short term. We are still planning on Bright Fest, October 31st. And you recall that that is because we were unable to do Freedom Fest. Uh, Bright Fest is planned for 2:00 PM to 7:30 PM. There will be food trucks, there'll be arts crafts, there'll be bingo, um, there will be, uh, carnival rides, uh, trunk or treats, and, and all within the Department of Commerce's guidance for certain events. So, we are planning on that. We appreciate the city's support. We think it will be a, a nice time, and we hope you will be interacting with friends too. Any questions or comments?
I'll answer them. Um, the ride, the kids, how much are they? Is it by ticket or is it?
It is by ticket, and I'm glad you asked. Um, I think you're a dog, or that, I could be wrong. Um, I, I do not know that detail. We, we price it so that most kids can peruse it. There is the, um, suggestion that there will be a donor who will allow us to hand out tickets to, um, kids, um, who are there. That hasn't been confirmed, and we don't have, uh, that money yet, but, but we're hoping that that's going to be for county. Um, we think that would be a wonderful thing to have kids there who may not have, may not have quarters and dimes and maybe a little bit more. So, let's hope that that's, that transpires. Thanks for asking.
Everybody's on, on the register for the fireworks and all, is it?
Yep, we're still ongoing for the fireworks. All that's been approved and worked out, and, um, you know, given any, something way unforeseen that will take place.
Is that, is that even powdery?
I'm sorry? It is powdery Saturday. Saturday, October 31st. So, there'll be trunk or treat. Uh, we hope that that'll be an opportunity for kids to participate in that. There's some, uh, many churches do that too, but, but we do have churches participating in, even though it's not recommended to do trick or treat, which you, we think we can maybe manage now with this distancing. And by the way, it won't just be on the square, it's going to be spread out so that we can comply with the common law.
What's the, what's the numbers of operation, uh, for the temple?
2:00 PM ends at 7:30. That means most, about right, there will be a DJ, I forgot that. Uh, so most likely, all the, um, other activities will conclude around 7:00, so that the fireworks can take place and we can get them home, uh, by 7:30.
And the fireworks, specifically where?
They will be on, um, Mayor Curtis Floyd's property.
They're on the Johnson Business Club or the warehouse event?
Yeah. I mean, so really spread out, no danger. We, we have the fire department place in our looking out.
All right, thank you, Nancy.
Well, thank y'all. Have a good night.
You too. All right, thank you. Our citizens wishing to appear before council by message, Dolores Betz, PD Coalition.
PD City.
Hi.
My name is the board chair, and I am with the PD Coalition. I am the town councilor for Darlington County. Um, I want to say thank you so much for the safety on 105 Orange Street. We serve so many victims there. We are, even though we're in the pandemic, we are still serving, we're still assisting with, um, order protection. I'm still doing counseling. I do it virtually to keep, uh, the families safe. That is working out really well. Uh, but we do have victims that come by office, um, that need assistance with, um, the order of protection, or they may need assistance with finding a safe place to go. And we, we still have our, our 24-hour shelter, which is located in Florence, of course, and then we have our transition shelter, which is located in Wallace. So, I want to say thank you so very much. Um, from, um, 2019 to 2000, um, 2018 to 2019, we serve 77, um, clients, uh, victims. Some of those victims are ongoing, so it's not like they just come in for service. Uh, one time, they're, they're coming back for different services, uh, for different support. Um, we also provide, I do a virtual, um, ser, I do a virtual, um, I do a virtual support group on Wednesday from 4:00 to 5:00. That's also to keep the families safe, because a lot of the families that we serve, they have children, and some of them have small children. And this is a way for them to be able to still stay at home, stay safe, keep their children safe, but still getting very, very deserved that they need. For me, I have a question.
Now, all these women are from the local area?
From Darlington County. And some of, uh, quite a few of them are from Darlington too.
You have, you said there's one in Hartsville, Perry?
It is, um, in Hartsville, we serve.
And where does this budget come from?
Out of, it comes from the AP office. Um, it comes from the Attorney General's Office. We have so funding that's private. Um, unfortunately, tonight I don't have those numbers. I do apologize, but I can't get some information anymore.
All right.
Thank y'all so much for your support.
Thank you. Dee.
Um, this may, uh, see now, if don't know for the whole day, if you saw a kid, anything about Darlington, well, I think it's time for the owner of the old day steel shop to say, what is the owner's future plan for the old day steel shop? The owner don't need to say, not for sale, not for waste. I would like a straight answer for the owner of the old day steel shop. What is the owner's waiting on for that to happen? I don't know what the owner's plan is for the old day steel shop. If she plans to open back up the old day steel shop building, the owner doesn't know that, know that answer is the owner of the old day steel shop. Some local, my local, more local, more village for the town. I will fight all the way to the end. What, what I see is Darlington fine for him, boy and village, new village. I, I thank Mayor, City Council, seeing me, seeing me, I know that I am, I am standing strong, you fight the old of Darlington.
Thank you, Dee. Thank you. Thank you, Dee. Appreciate you, everybody. All right. All right, report of standing committees of the unfinished business, uh, we have a don't, okay, you have something? Okay, you have something that were emailed in?
Yes, sir. We had several public comments that were emailed in. Um, the first is, um, an email from Miss Landon Poole. She says, um, and I believe she emailed this to all of y'all as well. Dear City Council, thank you to those who voted yesterday. Perhaps an ordinance requesting face masks in public places inside the city limits, while an ordinance requiring face masks would be more effective, a request to wear masks is a step in the direction of improving our current situation with COVID-19. If our circumstances deteriorate, perhaps we will reconsider the ordinance as a requirement. Thank you especially to Councilmember Milling for sponsoring the ordinance, and to Councilmember Reed for passionately speaking in its favor. Thank you, Councilmember Gardner, for directing the compromise in a language that allows us to have some guidance in place. I'm one of the many people in Darlington who suffer from health conditions that put me at an increased risk if I contract COVID-19, and I appreciate the members of council who voted for my and so many others publicly. Although it was very difficult to hear council members speak via the faceless video, I believe I heard a councilperson claim that we do not need an ordinance, that citizens should take a common sense approach to wearing masks. As evidenced by so many who do not wear masks despite numerous close contact interactions and public appearances, we cannot seem to rely on common sense. I wish that we could. I believe that Councilmember Milling's argument to enforce mask wearing with simple reminders is sound and just. If we can enforce speeding, seatbelts, and parking violations, surely our police department can remind people to wear masks. So, thank you again to those of you who are strong enough to vote in favor of your citizens. We see you and we appreciate you. Sincerely, Landon Poole. Uh, we have another, um, comment that was emailed in from Mr. Adam Poole, um, and this, uh, document is also on your table in front of you. He is proposing, uh, to start a conversation with council about a water bill relief fund. And so I will read it for you. Uh, Water Relief Fund Proposal. Summary. In light of the city of Darlington's necessary rate increase on water, sewer, and stormwater fees, we believe the city can help provide organizational support to apply money raised through donations directly to the water and sewer bills of families in need. In order to make this process efficient, transparent, and ethical, we hope that the city will create a dedicated account to which individuals, companies, and nonprofits can donate. Funds raised will be applied directly to eligible accounts. In order to ensure providing a commensurate to the increase, we also propose that each eligible household receives no more than $30 relief per month, which will allow the fund to serve those who will be most impacted by the rate increase. In addition, we believe that this amount could also be applied to shut off fees or pass balances for out eligible citizens. While $30 may seem a small amount, it is appropriate that the fund serves many citizens with a reprieve commensurate with yearly increase. At the hub, at the public hearings on the rate increase, overwhelming concern was that the increase will not be able to be accounted into already strained budgets. This fund would help stabilize those budgets. No one in Darlington should have to choose between paying their water bill or buying groceries. Eligibility requirements. We believe that senior citizens on fixed incomes and families living at or below 125% of the federal poverty guidelines should be the primary recipient of these funds. Eligibility can be obtained through tax return information or other forms aid received, perhaps school lunch reduction rates. Residents behind on water shut-off fees should also be able to apply the same eligibility requirements. Distribution considerations. While an interest-earning startup fund would be ideal, we believe it is more likely that funds will be applied each month to eligible accounts, zeroing out the fund each month unless we can raise more than we need. If this is the case, we'll keep squirre, squirreling it away until it is needed. Two models for consideration. Applying funds to accounts most in need, or spreading funds across all eligible accounts equally. Both have their benefits and their drawbacks, and those who know better handle on the number of accounts and severity of death will have more insight, I'm sure. Benefits for the city. A well-publicized and well-funded account for a water bill relief will demonstrate to the citizens of Darlington and beyond that the city is addressing infrastructure issues, while also recognizing that the city has a role in helping mitigate the financial hardships this will cause our most at-risk, underserved residents. It's also good public health policy to ensure access to running water. If this can help residents keep the water running, it should be enacted, supported, and promoted. And the last email comment that we received, um, from Gracie Lloyd. She is 85 years old and lives on a fixed income from South Street. The mere fact that the county has increased her water bill by $30 to repair streets that has nothing to do with the flooding in her community or area, Main Street near IGA, Chestnut and Chestamine. So, what residential areas is the city looking out for? The people didn't vote you in to raise their taxes and water bills, they voted you in to help the city, not to do more harm in raising water bills and sewer fees. These same senior citizens and lower-income residents are the same ones who came out and voted for someone whom they thought was going to do the city of Darlington some good, who's looking out for senior citizens, who's looking out for lower-income residents, not the mayor of the city of Darlington. Gracie DeLoyd. And then the last comment, Lucy.
Okay, thank you. All right, unfinished business. Uh, second reading ordinance 2020-18, general obligation bond, $400,000. Any discussion on that?
I make the motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance 2020-18, our general obligation bond for $100,000. Or I think that's enough.
Mr. Sigur, second. Okay. All right, um, Luke, um, Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Staggis?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Okay, it's passed. Thank you. All right, um, unfinished business. Public hearing ordinance 2020-19, annexation 325 North Main Street. Please. If there's any public comments about it, come up also.
I have not received any public comments on this issue. Um, this is a property adjacent to the city of Darlington, uh, two people live in the household, and it is along North Main Street. We're just frequently in and out as we go along, uh, and the person wants to, um, hook into our, actually folks, this person has city surrounding them, so it would certainly make sense to annex.
All right, any other public comments? All right, very good. Are we just close the public hearing on that? Thank you, Lisa. All right, uh, second reading ordinance 2020-19, annexation 325 North Main Street. Any discussion on that? Do we have a motion? I believe we go ahead and vote on the second reading on the ordinance 2020-19, annexation 325 North Main Street.
I'll second that.
Lane?
Yes.
Aye? Mr. Staggis?
Aye.
Staggis? Aye? All right, thank you. The passes? All right, uh, new business. Uh, first reading ordinance 2020-20, leasing the Carnegie Library to the Johnson County Live, to the Johnson County. Howard, I'd say girl, girl, I don't want to say girl. Maybe girl, you can find it up. There's a 30 sound over. And you want to discuss the details of this?
Yes, this is something that Darlington County approached this with, um, possibly half a year ago, about using the, uh, Carnegie Library, uh, just for brick district of Carnegie Library. It was built in 1920, uh, by some citizens, and it's 10,000, who raised $1,000 monthly, and they give from the Andrew Carnegie, uh, Foundation for $10,000. Edition was made in the 1950s. It served as the county's library from 1988, when they moved, uh, to the hill, off right up the hill on North Main Street. This is 1988, it's been owned by the school district class, the county class, and the city class, and we've had it since 1999. We got grants, um, through Sen, uh, Senator Gerald Loy, Representative Benny Nielsen, Congressional, uh, Congressman John Spratt to refurbish the library. We spent $700,000 in city funds and grants to do that, and we've essentially mothballed the facility, waiting for a day like this when someone will come along and want to use it. The county has promised to finish it, uh, interior renovation, interior, and they will pay to the parking lot, and the stipulations, uh, are listed there, um, that they will be financially responsible for all in relation to the library. Exterior refurbishment of the library must be approved by city of Darlington. The county will be responsible for all utilities, they'll pay the parking lot as I mentioned, they'll make it available for community meetings visiting, they'll maintain the proper, property and liability insurance of the Carnegie Library. And Darlington County will win one lump sum, at least payment in the amount of $50, which will be for 50 years through the year 2027. Now, we have added something in there, uh, after the year 2060, Darlington County has the option to purchase the Carnegie Library for $1. That says it's currently proposed, but, uh, this is a win-win for everybody. Um, they will use the building to fix it up. They're also planning to look at, uh, locating the, uh, utilities underground on that block, which is a win for everybody also. So, this will be kind of complement to what they're doing with Courthouse, and then the Dub Hill also will consult commission improvements to their building.
The utilities on that block include, uh, by Caroline Bank, correct?
I believe it will go from, uh, from their block across to, um, the Carnegie Building. I haven't seen any plans for the shed, it's just been talking about it. We've also been talking about putting up some electric charging stations on the parking side, uh, side also.
And that building's been empty for 34 years? Any questions or discussion? Lane?
I make the motion that, that we are, I would like to suggest a little bit, the last 9/1, um, after the year 2060, Darlington County has bought the first Carnegie Library for $1. We all found that?
But they're going to be putting about how much?
Eventually, by the quarter, they'll, you know, I don't keep it, uh, for the category of, uh, frankly, 2060, uh, we are a work.
frankly, in twenty-sixty, uh, we are, whatever you want to do with that.
I'm fine with it, I mean, it's like it said, it says, it has sat there for thirty-four years, um, they're gonna, they're gonna use it, allow us to still park there, um, I think it's kind of a win, I think it is a win. Probably got a building, so not, not deteriorating, be a plus, so they'll, they'll definitely keep it up.
No, I mean, the whole idea behind this is just wonderful, I love it, uh, just, it's hard for me to swallow, giving the building away for a dollar, I guess.
We can strike that last one if you want to, uh, let me, uh, there's one thing I forgot to mention, too. The county is looking at permeable asphalt for that site, too, it'll help store more
Howard, I mean, historically, you have been more than, I guess, the rest of us, John Seeger, you've been on here for a while, what do we do historically in situations? So, at the end of the last line, I was saying, the year twenty-sixty, Darlington County has the option to purchase the Carnegie Library for a dollar, I'm just curious, historically, you know, what we have done in other municipalities, um, just hard for me to swallow.
Uh, there, there are fifteen Carnegie libraries still standing in State of Carolina. There are, are few that are used as libraries, Atlanta is a good example, kind of like the ones we have. Others are used, I think in Camden, they have it as a museum, there's been many different uses, sometimes, sometimes the county ends up with them, sometimes the city ends up with them, sometimes they revert to private ownership. So this is a way to keep it in the public trust and to ensure that it sticks around because by the end of this agreement, that building will be a hundred-and-forty years old, but like I say, it's no problem just to strike that part out, but as we mentioned earlier, this is a win-win for everybody involved, and, um, most of us will be around in the year twenty-sixty, and, and it can be decided by another county council, or another city council.
Do we harm the green, but strike that?
I don't think so.
Layer out.
We can make a motion to approve it, uh, by this that far.
So we take that out, there is no purchase at all, they just assume, you know, they're just looking at the option, they just have to negotiate.
Just have to renegotiate it for a year.
The closest I can think is close to that is this building. It was an armory in nineteen-seventy, but the city and county shared it. It was given to the city in nineteen-seventy-nine, when they moved out on the bypass, or, uh, Highway one-fifty-one, and the county has used this building for forty-plus years, um, and the rent they paid is cheaper than they send, I think it's, what's the percentage of it?
Hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Hundred-and-fifty dollars, huh? So, eventually, we're not gonna have a need for two gyms, or we're gonna put a new gym out on the one-fifty-one, what's gonna happen to this building? Is that we'd have to go and find a contract, we'd have to look and see. It's, it's the only thing that I can think of that's similar to that, because we've got a newer building over there, it's AW Stanley Gym, and we're gonna be building out on, uh, Pass the Res, right, so this is the only building I can think of that would be even close with, with Carnegie Library. People, people of goodwill can agree on keeping a, a building in the public trust for a whole
Guess we'll have to see what they do in fifty years.
Okay, just wanted to make a motion to approve it, other than, uh, the last line, I'm just one vote.
I'm just, I'm asking.
Anybody else want to make the motion to approve it without that?
You, you are asking that you can leave this out.
I'm not necessarily asking that, I mean, um, I hope the building stays in public trust, but fifty years from now, they're gonna have the option to buy it for a dollar and sell it, if I could do whatever they do.
How, how long have we had it?
We've had it since nineteen-ninety-nine.
And we've had it almost twenty-one years, and it's just sat there. Been empty for thirty-four years.
We put seven-hundred thousand dollars.
Pretty empty. I get it. Everything else I was up there, it just, it just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy that they're taking it, and there won't be another empty building up on my corner, and it's going to actually, it's going to stand up in the, you know, interest here, so it will, it will be kept up.
So, as long as, according to what I'm hearing, as long as they have it here until after, uh, twenty-sixty, the total responsibility of the, he would maintain that this building is on the cap. And then they, after, uh, twenty-sixty, they could purchase it for a dollar. But until that time, they have their maintenance, it is.
They have until twenty-seventy, they have until twenty-seventy to lease it, so until twenty-seventy, they'd lease it, he was, he wrote it here, at twenty-sixty, that they could purchase it for a dollar.
Right, but I'm just saying, until that, oh, which is forty years from now, it's been owned, and they have been, with the total responsibility of that building is taken. So I think it's only right that they have, right, to do that for a dollar.
That's fair.
I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, that's fair.
So how, in the last thirty years, how much money have you put into that building?
Seven-hundred thousand dollars in twenty years.
And how much have we gained from the building?
Nothing.
Exactly, so I don't see a problem with letting them use the building, maintain the building, keep the building up, and you done threw away seven-hundred thousand dollars and got nothing out of it. I don't see what the issue is.
And the seven-hundred thousand dollars came from where? Grants?
Under twenty-five thousand dollars to the State of South Carolina, under forty-nine thousand dollars on the State of America Treasuries Grant, Congressman John Scrapp. The rest came from funding from the city of Darlington.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is, but, um, and I'm happy, I'm, I'm more than thrilled that it's gonna be taken care of and not go to waste. Again, if they want to say, maintain it for forty to fifty years, they go put a lot of money into it, in my opinion, they should have the right to buy it for a dollar, be, be happy that it got, got us that.
They're gonna be keeping up in fifty years, I'm fine with that, but it'll have a new deal to use.
Well, I make the motion that we approve the first reading ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty, that will be Carnegie Library to Darlington County.
Second. Mr. Gordon?
Aye.
Ms. Baggers?
Aye.
Schnittles?
Aye.
Aye. So passes. Thank you, Darlington County. All right, and thank you, City Council. All right, first reading ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-one, commercial refuse, uh, container
Billy, my name is Counsel. Um, can you hear me? Um, back when we were doing our budget work session, y'all should, y'all have a copy of this spreadsheet, okay, all right, when we were doing our budget work session, uh, I believe I included this, and we went over, when I did my presentation, we went over and talked about it, uh, but anyway, when we were doing the voting on the new things, somehow another of the, uh, commercial stuff got left out. So, uh, I talked to Howard, and we decided to move out and present it to council, because when you look at some of the rates that we're being charged, and some of the rates that we're charging, especially on your two yards and some of your four yards, we're actually losing money on them, uh, and I feel like that we need to at least adjust the, the fee, so that we can at least break even, if not, make a little bit of money off of it, um, so that's what we're doing. You got it?
I lost it, and I'm still getting time, I guess. I'll need, I'll need to.
You, you need one?
No, keep on with the presentation, sir.
All right, so, anyway, that's what we're coming to you tonight for, is to, uh, I guess answer any questions you may have about this, uh, and see what we need to do to move to all, but we wanna keep it the way, the way it is, the same, we can continue to lose some money, or if we wanna increase the fees, we can increase them, at least break even and make a little bit of money. Any questions?
Oh, okay, I see.
Tom says, one X, two X, three X.
What that is, is, if you, like the two yard, just going across the top, two yards, we have fourteen dumpsters that are dumped once a week. We're being charged forty-one dollars and forty-nine cents a month for those dumpsters, and we're charging thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We have, uh, two dumpsters that we're dumping twice a week, we're in two yards, and we have three dumpsters that we're, we're dumping three times a week, that are two yards. We don't offer a lot of two yards, just for simple fact, that's what we're losing most of our money on. So, um, that's how, that's how you make it, the two, two X, or one X, two X, three X, it's two times a week, one time a week, three times a week.
So realistically, on your two yards, all of those, we're losing, um, except for the three containers that are dumped three times, we're making them seven dollars.
That's right.
The four yards, you have twenty-six containers, um, and we're losing fifty-nine cents on those.
That's right. The six and eight yards, pretty much.
Eleven of them, that we're actually making some money on. But if you look at the six, let's see, the six yards, for example, you have eleven of those containers, you're currently charging seventy-five dollars, we're being charged sixty dollars, so the city's only making fifteen dollars.
That's right. And we have other fees. We get charged, the city gets charged if, uh, they move the dumpster, uh, whenever we deliver the dumpster, if they have to get a new one, or if it's a new business, we get charged a delivery fee if they pick it up, because the business closed, we get charged for that, and the pass, I would think, that charge is just then passed on to the customer. I mean, if they leave, they close down, it's kind of hard to pass that charge on to them. Uh, so that's the charge that we have told them, I think it's a hundred-and-twenty-five hundred-and-fifty dollars. But they do charge delivery charges, and they do charge if they have to move one, because it's not a good location or whatever, so.
Say that one more time now, so if I, if I get a dumpster.
Yes, sir.
And I, and I close down.
And you close down. When we call allies, or Republicans, tell them we need them to pick that dumpster up, they charge us to come out and pick that dumpster up.
Okay. Hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Hundred-and-twenty-five, hundred-and-fifty dollars.
And at that, at that point, you don't collect the hundred-and-twenty-five dollars?
There's no way to collect it, because the customers.
Well, wouldn't it be, is, would we need to make a, a proposal to put that as an upfront fee? That can be refunded, that can be refunded back to them, or?
That's kind of some of the reason why we kind of increase the fees, so we can put a little money in the banks if we have to, you have one picked up, and we got one to close it with.
Like on a, on a residential, we're charging twenty-eight fifty now, correct?
Yeah, we're charging twenty-eight fifty.
How much does the city make on that? Because we, we dump that, correct?
Yeah, we dump that, uh.
And we, we got expensive people, but?
We got expensive people truck, and we don't pay tipping fees on residential.
And on twenty-eight, on twenty-eight fifty, what does it cost us to dump that?
Uh, exactly.
I mean, do you have an idea what we're making on the twenty, on a resident?
Probably, twenty-eight fifty covers, that covers your trash and yard debris, or, huh? Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's not all of the residential.
So we're making maybe fifteen dollars off of, at the ballpark, maybe?
I don't know, geez, I mean, that's, that's our primary source of income, and when you look at our primary source of income, if you look at how much we're bringing in, and how much we're actually, that's costing around the apartment, we're still a little red, so I don't know if we're really making anything, by trying to look at the whole picture.
I'm just saying, you got fourteen containers that you're, that you're charging, uh, for the recycling, charging forty-five dollars now, and, um, they charge us forty-four, thirty-five, so we're losing on that, um.
You got missed off, what do you?
When you go down to recycle for the city, you have fourteen containers, forty-five dollars, and they're charging us forty-four, thirty-five, so we're, we're breaking even, we're making no money.
That's right.
You're making no money on four yards, twenty-six containers, you're losing money on fourteen containers, so there's twenty, thirty, forty, fifty-four containers that we're either losing money or breaking even on. Uh, eleven containers that we're only making fifteen dollars on the side six yard, just looking at this first one here, that first row. I'm, I'm, I don't have a problem saying I'm the one that brought this up and caught my attention, because when I first started, I noticed that some of the containers, before Alex took it over, uh, some of the containers at locations that were just sitting there, or I think the city was still being built for, correct, from, uh, some of the places that were empty. The business had moved, two or three months later, a container was still sitting there, and then it came to our attention that, hey, we're, you know, we're paying for that, and then we looked, and, well, we're losing money on a good number of these, so something needs to be done, um, because we're not in the business to lose money, we're in the business to, uh, make money, but we're in the business to be proactive with what we make, so that we can make our city better, and it takes money to do that, and with these businesses, you know, we're, a lot of them are getting the trash picked up, and it's costing the city to do that. Any further discussion? All right, do we have a motion to, um, passes?
You're proposing to raise the residential rate, break down a hot dollar?
No, the proposal, I mean, the.
You got the breakdown sheet?
Yeah. If you look at the breakdown sheet, it has each, each one of the broken down individuals.
I see there are roll carts at the bottom, current charge range is, yeah.
Roll carts is, I mean, this was the spreadsheet that I put.
Yeah, that's already counted, the twenty-eight fifty.
I will, and it's the, the Republican charges at the top.
The residential, that, that's already, that's already been increased, correct?
The residential's already been approved, I mean, we didn't, we didn't address the commercial roll carts, and we didn't address the commercial recycling, um, we can address that now, or we can address it at a later time, or whatever you wanna do, I, I will say that the commercial recycling, we don't have, we've got thirty-five carts, uh, we were paying plus-wood, eleven dollars and fifty cents a cart, and we're not charging a dime for it, so we were going to hold all the way around. Now, we've taken it over, we're doing it ourselves, in house.
But this is, this is along with your proposal, correct? The commercial roll carts?
We can, I mean, we can talk about commercial roll carts, we can talk about those in the commercial recycling.
Well, that's, I mean, it's all together, it's all the same sheet, it's all the same thing.
This is the spreadsheet that I submitted whenever we were doing the, uh, the budget work session.
We can have a rate sheet that has the number of, you know.
Say what we're done?
So, section one says that the city of Darlington wants to increase the commercial refuse dumpster charges per attached fee sheet. I understand that it says commercial, you still got a whole bunch of other charges that obviously have nothing to do with it. I don't know how.
It says commercial container fees.
Yeah, but your attached sheet still has a, pardon my language, trash.
But the residential's already been approved.
So, commercial recycling down here at the bottom?
I went over all of this whenever we were doing the budget work session, whenever rates were being approved, those were not approved, they were, they were left out.
Exactly. Now, when I've approved it, I've said, those are the next page, and see what we're gonna be charging, and there's stuff on here we haven't heard, what we get approved previously, correct?
That's right.
So, county's it. I mean, I guess you have to know what's going to be passed, and it's not, that's all I'm trying to say, not trying to be hard, um, but it seems like roll carts, commercial, and that's commercial recycling, I'll be with it.
As whatever you want, Howard asked me to get the breakdown sheet, I had put this together back first of the year, so I, we submitted this to Howard. I mean, I could have taken everything off the bottom, if you wanted, if, you know, if you wanted.
Well, that's, that's, what's, the commercial, roll carts were said commercial fees.
It's a public record, I mean, we just need to be a little bit clearer on our homework, I guess, I'll say.
Well, I mean, he's got, he's got, we get on their commercial fees.
And, and we approved the residential from this.
And, and we approve the residential from this, or have this all the time. So he's saying you made it to a set.
I'm not confused, Pat, pardon me, I'm not confused. What I'm saying is you have the commercial recycling at the bottom, and we aren't doing anything to that tonight.
Correct.
And who can say that we can? I would, I would, I would say we're going to do it because that's all we do.
When he came here tonight, we weren't planning on doing anything with it, am I wrong?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
I'm not wrong with that, so what I'm saying is, it's down here on the bottom, and you got it clearly right. You're right, because the first page, looking at the law, what ordinance we're having is suggesting to find the ready crease on the bottom page. But there's ready crease on the bottom page that aren't being used.
Right. Because he presented this, we know already, the same thing that you have listed on here, including the residential, is how he voted, or the residential offered the same sheet with the same information. So what I'm saying is, if we did it at that time, we didn't vote on commercial then, but it was listed just like it. But have we voted on the residential part, however? This time, we'll vote the same information, but now we're going to commercial. That's all this is.
Which would include? And we can spill it out. All dumpster sizes and charges, all roll carts for commercial, commercial recycling. Is what needs to be approved. Because the residential has already been approved.
I wish we could do that, but I don't think we can, because don't you have to publicize this?
Well, if you did that, we'd vote, it's the same.
He's asking included the recycling. Or is it, did we advertise the recycling? Are you saying we did that and we did the work session anyway?
I'm saying when we voted, when we passed it for the residential, the same language over here included residential, and didn't have all of these things on, on, on here, and we, the same thing that we're doing now, we did it for residential. It's not different. And we really need to pass it.
I've got no problem passing the commercial side of the law, I mean, just, if we're attaching second page, I think it should be a little more specific, I guess, if not long.
Brother, if you would like to pass the dumpster tonight, I would go ahead and come back to you next month with commercial roll carts and commercial recycling, so I might be happy.
Rates and tactics, I don't think ever makes sense, I have to, um, but I got no problem with the commercial recycling on that next one, I'd rather do that, I guess.
So you're just, you're saying because of section one, it just says dumpster charges, it should say dumpster and recycling?
I just, I just, the section one was a carbon copy of what it lists, it's defined, I guess. So section one should just have, you know, the dumpsters that he, that we just discussed, it shouldn't have anything below it. This is great for a work session, but not for an ordinance or a law, uh, it's sloppy. Um, and if we're going to tax the commercial recycling, I think we have to wait a month, and we have to actually publicize it, I'm not mistaken. Whatever y'all want. Now, I mean, that's the law, it's not what we want to do, it's the law. Right, now we have to publicize that fee, fee increases?
Kevin, Kevin, Henry?
Howard, can you answer that?
Yeah, we, we do, we do, I just, I was just, I mean, it's legal questions, I was going to the board, Kevin.
Yeah. So, I'm fine, I guess what I'm asking is the second page, uh, there we produce it for the minutes, if we delete all the stuff that doesn't relate to it. But, Eric, can you do that?
Just, just come back and do it next time?
No, you don't have to go back, I think we could pass it just literally. Blur, I guess, I could question this too.
So, you want, do we need to re-race?
I mean, we can't just amend it and say dumpster and recycling.
I don't think anything needs to be amended, I think we could just pass it as needed, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but I just don't think we need to have all this extra stuff down here that has nothing to do with it. Because it specifically says, you know, the first page, section one, I guess, the, um, charge per the attached fee schedule. And the state attached fee schedule should just be indicative of what we're actually passing and nothing else. I don't think that's that difficult. I'm not trying to be difficult, uh, just example.
Siggers.
Let's, let's change that first sentence up there where it says commercial refuse dumpster fee, it said dumpster and roll cart fee. We're saying commercial dumpster and roll cart fee.
I think that just gets them a less, one less month on fees, so you can't do that unfortunately because we haven't, um, advertised those other things. You know, may have public been advertising for a very.
Let me ask you something. I would see on, on, on this, I'm just looking at it, it doesn't refer to the tax sheet that is for our information. So take the, take the back sheet off, and we don't have to talk.
The front sheet doesn't make sense without the back sheet.
But I mean, it doesn't, I mean, that's just for us.
Uh, if you read section one, it says change the per, your tax fee schedule, without the attached fee schedule, it's kind of.
Because that same fee schedule is attached to our residential, the one we already passed, the same sheet.
How about this, I'll make it real simple. Take a pair of scissors, cut the sheet off above monthly totals, and it's fine. All right?
I'm going to take, I'll hold about three seconds on my computer to delete that file off.
Exactly.
It's not a big deal, it's easy, what?
And then send that sheet to the floor, and I think everything's good, and it's publicized.
So you want to delete the roll cart?
Damn. Just everything below, because it has no relation to the ordinance, that's all I'm asking, there's no relation.
So the other thing, if these two, commercial and commercial recycling, that should show up on here, is what you're saying?
We're just going to dump it tonight, and we'll come back next month and do roll carts and the, and the commercial recycling, right?
Well, that's correct, because you've only advertised the fee increase for the commercial property, correct? Have you advertised anything else?
I haven't advertised anything, I guess, yeah, the Hallow, so I mean.
You're talking on behalf of the ordinance, so have we advertised anything?
For this, we have not, we have.
So, you can only pass it, but we leave, we can only pass that thing. Once we want to get sued, so, yeah, just take a pair of scissors. At the bottom. Bring your document up, make sure you leave your word, it's already.
So do you make a motion to pass?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to, I apologize for slowing you down.
Do you make a motion, regarding, do you make a motion to pass the first reading ordinance, twenty-twenty dash twenty-one, commercial refuse container fees, with the attached form minus the second sheet from roll cart statement?
I would be happy to motion to pass that, although it's as a.
Set.
Siggers? Mr. Siggers?
Aye.
Spackes?
Aye.
Mr. Nettles? Aye. Thank you.
If I'm going back next month for rest of the.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
I have no problem, I was my authority.
But, he's, he's spread, it, it didn't save him, that on there, so we'll leave it, we're good.
Now, boy.
All right.
Yeah, boy.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, just a comment. I want us, along with this, we're having such a problem with some of the areas that is, is in my world. Where people dump, um, dump their furniture and all kinds of things that we're trying to be a part of to monitor. One of my neighbors didn't see someone put that out, is there any way that we can maybe invest in some kind of camera surveillance or something? I don't know how we can stop this, but we are having a problem, and folks are coming to me, and one lady, she was just kind of scared because she was by herself, but she saw. And I told her, and I was hoping that she, uh, she called me, I did try to call, and offer some, of course, they don't matter at time. Uh, and she didn't get a license number, what can, you know, along with this, along with this.
I mean, there is, uh, there is the, uh, chance that we could purchase a deer camera if we know that, um, there was a street, I'm not going to name it, that we know that across departments, we had a lot of, a lot of, uh, activity that was, that was being spot over and over and over, that were, uh, chances that we could buy a fifty to a hundred dollar deer camera, stick it up somewhere, if they call us and say it's constant, constant situation, that we're, maybe we could catch someone that way, it's possible.
I just want to, I just want to kind of put it out here and see, as a discussion sometime.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'll be there, but we may have time.
All right, uh, new business, uh, the Baldwin Gym Rental for Circuit Court, Howard?
Due to COVID nineteen, uh, Darlington County is, is looking for a place to hold court, um, during the, uh, the twice month meeting that we had with part of the city manager, Darlington County Commissioner, I had offered use of Baldwin Gym, and they brought the court report, Scott Suggs over, they looked, they agreed, you can see some of their, um, furniture over here, which they've been using, they started court last week. Uh, so they'd like to use the, uh, Baldwin Gym for six months, and it's still allowing, just a free paragraph of written, we have it in the county, they would pay us seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, plus the constant utilities for you to build in there more than six months, and it would have started as of October first. I believe that we talked about this on the phone with everybody, and everybody seemed to be okay with it, so it's helping the county out of the situation, uh, again, short term. If it was to be revisited later in the spring, we'd have to look at, at new terms, and plus, if we still have to do this in spring, we're in the world of purpose.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Do you do anything?
Any more discussion? All right, do we make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Baldwin Gym Rental for Circuit Court.
I'll second that.
Mr. Siggers? Spackes?
Aye.
Mr. Nettles? Aye. All right, thank you. All right, uh, esports proposal, Al Brendan?
Hello, sir. Um, I was tasked by, I directed the Andrews to, uh, investigate and explore the options of doing esports, which Florence County has started. Um, esports is not a normal game like Fortnite, and what you say, e-gaming is a team building sport. Um, it's more STEM, you think about STEM as engineering and science and stuff like that, um, that's what e-gaming is. Um, it's more team building, uh, the kids learn how to code, they learn how to, um, computer program, um, along with learning how to play games. And what it does is, it draws kids that are not interested in sports. Um, every kid is not interested in sports, you know, you got a lot of kids that stay in the house, like to play games, and is just not athletic. Um, this draws a whole nother realm of kids that we leave out, like this awful sport. It takes us in a whole nother dimension. Um, investing is, is equivalent to investing in a gym, um, a ball field, but it's for a other group of kids that, that is not as social as everybody else. Um, I talked to Nathan Dorsey, Dorsey at Florence County, and he told me that he had a lot of kids that have never played sports, have never did anything, wasn't interested in recreation department, and they often e-game them. And they started it up at midnight, but every fifty minutes, within the hour, less than hour, thirty minutes, it was so long. It was so long, they had to put kids on weight. Um, and he said, since it started, it's kids who haven't played sports, have been into sports because they broke into that social barrier of beating other kids. So they're trying soccer, they're trying basketball, they're trying baseball, and then you got kids that are interested in sports, are coming over to this world and learning computer science. Uh, so the good thing about it is that we're not only offering sports, we're offering something that the kids can take into the future. They can learn, learn how to build computers, we're offering them something in the future where they can have a job. Um, right now, Copeau is offering forty thousand dollars scholarships to play esports. Yes, just go play video games, you can get a forty thousand dollar scholarship to Copeau. Once we get all this set up, um, everything falls into our court because we're having to go for STEM grants, um, the Avro Science, the Avro Science grant, and it all paid to itself. Um, Nathan Dorsey told me that he had sponsors that never were interested in sponsoring anything, sponsoring esports. Because a lot of people who own businesses and stuff, their kids are not interested in sports, they might not be as social, so they're going to invest in what their kids are interested in, computer programs, trying to get to play games and stuff like that. Um, right now, Florence has a match schedule with COVID at the end, they're going to play a virtual match against Los Angeles. And he's selling this to all the companies, and he's telling them, it's going to be on like a YouTube channel, if you go on YouTube, they have a YouTube channel, and he's selling the businesses like this, you can see Florence County, and your business out of Florence County on YouTube playing against Los Angeles. Um, if you look at the code, uh, line out everything on these codes, it's from the commu, commu, um, computer monitors, to the photos, the gaming chairs, the switch, everything is, you can really rock and roll, um, from start to finish. And it's, this code is from NCTD, that's our, um, the city's internet people, and I'm just told that, that's what we have to go to because they maintain our server. So they'll be the one working on the program and keep the computers up. Um, another safe thing is, it has a firewall, so it's not like Fortnite where somebody can come in and talk to your kids and have sexual predators. It's, um, they have a firewall, and what Nathan was telling me is they have key workers. If something pops up, it hits the firewall and not know a lot of them. So somebody from China can't come in and try to talk to your kids, or somebody from Canada can't come in and try to, you know, you know, have a pedophile try to talk to the kid. Everything, firewall is protected, uh, it's very safe. In a time like this, esports is probably not something we can do during the pandemic, because it's, you can be social distance, you know, after shutdown, you can play teams all over the United States right there from Dallas. Um, right now, City of Charleston has stopped tapping into it, Lawrence, St. Andrews, um, City, City of Greenville. And he told me he had about twenty other visitors have scheduled to come to Florence to look at his program so they can start up. So once we start up, and we do start up, that our kids who have been seeing all over the United States, all over the county, um, they have, he has an event scheduled with COVID in, the US Army's going to come in and bring that team into the city center. The US Army has a hopeful, uh, esports team, and they're going to bring the whole setup into a arena, and set the city center as an arena, and they're going to have a arena event with all the game. So it's worldwide, and I just learned this talking with Nathan, the number one, um, esports technology company is in Quinney, it's called Arty. Um, he said that they're looking to invent and help and get yourself out, so there's a lot of people looking to invent. So I'm asking you to, uh, it's a big quote, it's about, comes up about thirty-six thousand dollars, almost thirty-seven thousand dollars. So that's set up, that's ready to go, it's a one-time fee. Um, after that, the program kind of pays for itself, so we don't have to come back and keep asking for money. Um, he, Florence helps us with everything because they're trying to venture out and get everybody set up. So they're willing to come in, help us with. So they're willing to come in, help us with smart chips, help us with smart chips. Right now, they're setting smart system like a five dollar. And he said that he don't have a problem getting.
Whenever I was talking to you earlier, you mentioned how they, I guess they use this system and then after they have their classes, what we call it, they'll have playtime like their Xbox and PlayStation and that kind of, I guess, units, that's what they do at Florence. I know those aren't included, but he said you're getting those right, you have those right?
Yeah, I got, what Florence does is because they have so many kids, so what they do is the games are basically set up in a team. It's either four V V, four V four, five V five, or six V six. So he might have twelve kids in a session, they might play a five V five. So what they did is they went and bought PlayStations and Xbox. And what they do is to keep kids always busy, the kids can go over and play the PlayStation while the other kids are doing this, and then they swap out, that's where everybody will get the time to play. So, so you do get to play the games, the games that everybody's playing like Fortnite and stuff like that, but it's more for adults. They do have adults who want to play, and the way they get the adults who want to play is they volunteer, they help coach. So you might have a gamer that a coach, a room around, you might be a gamer, but you want to volunteer, that's the way you can get into games and help kids keep them high guys.
So the volunteers be screened?
Everybody's in recognition for what is being, we have to get a background check to make sure that they're vetted. Before we let anybody volunteer, they have to.
They have eleven computers, but is there one for like the lead person?
What they do is they have a station, the margin station, but they have ten stations, and then they have a station where I, me, whoever is there being, they can monitor everything on the firewall, if something pop up, if something, if the kid's cursed, if it pop up on the screen, they can see, they can see the curse. And they can tell, they can tell, that person that be in the control room, he can tell everything, he can monitor.
Now, for the kids, when they sign up, is there a fee, like if I gotta play football?
Florence, right now, it's charging like forty five dollars. He said most of everything is taken care of through sponsors, but it's like forty, forty five dollars. And they run it like a regular season, so it's, so they're filming it like a baseball season or softball season. But I think what Florence here right now has, they first tenant started off for like ten kids, and it got so big before they could shut, shut the system down, they ended up taking like thirty kids, so what they did was they broke them up into ten, and they had three sessions. So they had thirty kids instead of ten, and they just broke them up into different ages. And they come from there, you can have.
That's what I'm saying, so here, say you sign up ten shorter, when would they, is there a set time when they would be? How long they would play?
He has, he have them set up coming in, he have one session coming in on Wednesday, like a weekday, because he's the only person in Florence County right now, so he kind of has it set up right now, so he have to come in like on Wednesday, and he has two groups come in on Saturday morning. So one might come in from nine to eleven thirty, and the other one might come in from like twelve or thirteen, whatever.
That's what I'm saying, so is it where we can have multiple, I mean, if you have more than ten people, you could have?
We can have them up and, we can sign up fifty kids and go ten every day of the week, we have them set.
And they're, they would stay in there for how long?
They would stay there about two hours, they come in about two hours that day.
So for forty five dollars, they come in for two hours approximately that day, they would be, how many times a week?
They do it once, right now, he's doing it one time a week, but in that two hours, they come in and they're teaching them the game, and then they get, they get into, if we want to do a smaller session, maybe two or three sets, let them come in two days a week, or staying longer, doing hours on weekend or whatever, we can do that, because what they do is they just teach them how to play the game and do the competitive stuff for a team, so they break them up, first they teach them the game, all the ins and outs of the game, and then they break them up into teams and then let them compete against each other before the competition.
And is there paying personnel that's in there, or are there volunteers in there with them?
Right now, we can use our rec staff, we have, we just hired an assistant, it's just over here, so it could be B, it could be M, it could be L. You know, we all, like we do now with sports, we all kind of interchange, who goes into that thing, we can just simply get somebody, and he said he has a lot of volunteers that are computers savvy, that we trust, that be there.
And how long does a session take for forty five dollars, is this like a nine week, twelve week?
Yeah, we can set it up into eight weeks or ten weeks a session, like a regular season, so we can set it up into a ten week session. And what we'll do is we'll go along with what Florence does, and he'll run it like eight, ten weeks, and we'll run it up. And he says getting bigger now, so the season might go longer, because he's looking at, he said during the pandemic, he's looking at about thirty teams. So he had to set up all the matches and all that, so we'll be able to compete. Like I said, he can set us up to compete with Texas, Los Angeles, we don't have to win it, if he calls us to die, we're winning it. We don't have to pay for a referee.
Sorry. Have you approached potential sponsors?
I haven't yet because I want to make sure we do, I have talked him today and he's willing to assist us in the program like he's assisting everybody else as far as, he already sent you sponsorship letters. But he has certain sponsors, you know, national sponsors that he's gonna help us get, but the local sponsors we have to get ourselves, but he can help us with the national sponsors.
So where is all this gonna be set up at?
Right now, we have, we have an empty room up there, and we're not using, so we can use it there, and we right now, that's the space we were talking about. So it don't cost us nothing, get the space. Once we get the computers and set them up, and we put security and stuff on the doors, maybe cameras upstairs, nobody can get in and everything, so basically you pay for this, it's like paying for it. They call it arena, that's what they call it, whenever you put this space, they call it arena. So they have, whenever you're playing, you play our team, it's live stream on YouTube, get it back and going, and that's how it's, the business is that, when you go on, your business can be seen in California or all over South Carolina, because what they do is when they come in a computer screen, you sell a cursor screen, when they come in, the screen says fifty, it stays on fifty. A chair sold by Domino's, they put a plaque on the chair that says Domino's. The jerseys, they're like team jerseys, but what they do is they go around, they have a bunch of sponsors on there, they sell a bunch of spots on the jersey. So they might sell sponsors for a hundred dollars, a hundred dollar spot, a hundred fifty dollar spot, and you can get many sponsors on that jersey.
So when, so child pays forty five dollars for eight weeks, let's say, and you said they're teaching them how to play the game, the next eight weeks, that child still won't come back and continue to play all year long?
What he said, what he has now, he has that constant, the kids that have been in, and he's kind of broken it to the age group now, so he keeps the, you know, I think he don't go below eight, nine, so he keep, he keep those age groups together, and he keep the high school kids together. It's gotten so big over there, Florence School District One has just invested a couple million dollars on the building an arena over there for that, in front of the kids.
So theoretically, it's just ramped to five hundred dollars. If you, if that team was making five hundred dollars, then, for two weeks, I mean, two months, that's what, six, six times that a team could continue to pay throughout the year, that one team. So that one team could bring in about three thousand dollars.
And yeah, and what he did was he went and sold his sponsorships. He said just to get started, he sold them on a two year agreement, just to lock them in, that's what he did at first. So he said price of he locked them in, he said just to get, what he can get, he locked them in on a two year agreement, which we don't have to do that, but that's what he did, he locked them in on a two year agreement, just to get started. Since he got started, he's been applying, he done got approved for a STEM grant and stuff like that, so. He said, like he said, once you get started, you get it set up, they can come in to look and see what you got, you can get approved for grants and stuff like that, and you don't have to rely on the minimum sponsorship, but you still need them.
And Howard, how would we pay for this, could we do it through hospitality or with your general fund? Hospitality, that's what, that's coming to a red. What about age limits with this?
We're gonna mirror Florence, and right now, he goes from nine year old to a senior high school. And, you know, once they get that age, they kind of lean out, unless the high school gets the program, and then we'll revisit, right now, he's just going from nine year old to a senior high school.
Is South Carolina high school league having anything to do with free sports?
They haven't yet, but they are looking into it because it's getting so big, and a lot of schools are getting it. Like I said, Coke, Coke is just introducing for running their first match of the year this, a couple weeks ago. So all of Florence School District One is doing, like four other schools have started it, so it's not, it's starting to be recognized as a sport, it wasn't recognized as a sport, but now you'll see something, they have a program, they have an academy down in Augusta, Georgia, it's called SCAD, and it's all, it's all about programming and gaming and stuff. So he went down there, he told us about it, so we were planning on going after COVID, looking at it, they have a SCAD cap, they'll teach you everything, and he said, everybody that's around for e-gaming sports, they're helpful, they do stuff, and they want everybody to learn, so they wanted to get out, so they're in the process now of teaching everybody and want everybody to do it. He has Coke and USC something coming to help those kids. So that's, it was originally, we're gonna reach out to Coke, we're gonna reach out to Antunes to help, help them raise people and help us teach the kids and stuff like that.
So everybody would pay to be on, either pay or either they would have a sponsorship? Brian, you had mentioned something about having a larger TV, I think, is that the size you were talking about on there?
Yeah, no, only thing I think I thought to add to this is there's no Xboxes or PlayStations included, and so if we're gonna move forward, that's, they made it set up, so they have two Xboxes, two PlayStations out there.
Yeah, right now, well, they're in the process because they've just brought it, and they're processing out a PS4, they can't be in the time, but they're like spending on one of the PS5. But we coming in, we're coming in with the PS5s are good, and they're probably good for next seven, eight years. And they're about five hundred dollar piece. So if you get four, that's about two thousand dollars, plus tax, you're looking at about twenty four hundred dollars. An extra controller, two extra controllers are thirty fifty dollars for each system, that's another three hundred dollars, and then games and accessories is about another thousand dollars, so you're looking at another thirty seven hundred dollars, so all the other, you're close to about forty thousand dollars, including the games and the PlayStations and the, and the system. Like I said, a lot of the stuff, once we get started, it'll pay for itself, because it ain't like you gotta buy new equipment every year. And the good thing about it, by Florence starting off, most of the stuff we get is stuff that they had to go back and upgrade. So the memory and stuff that we get is what Florence had to go upgrade on, so we have these systems for at least ten years, but we haven't.
The money it makes, is it go back into recreation or is it go back into the hospitality?
Hospitality.
That's good, with your hospitality. Just the money it makes, if we go back to professional. Any more discussion?
I'll take this break. Do we need to?
Any more discussion? Any more questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the esports proposal presented by Director Brenton Jet.
For how much?
Four, oh yes.
Eight for all?
Thirty six, for this amount, on the back, thirty six thousand, seventy seven dollars and fifty one cents. And I'll round that off.
And that doesn't include PlayStation thing?
If we do the PlayStation, it comes out for another three, about another thirty seven hundred dollars, forty five.
Did a little side conversation, Howard, you want to say anything?
Do that five thousand dollar break, we can get that, we're done for. Okay, for the, for the PlayStation.
So we go with this amount, and then we just make the proposal from that?
I'll second.
I'll second. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Gardner, Mr. Seger?
Hi.
Mr. Beckus? Mr. Nettles? All right, so that it's clear, the motion has, I also, the motion has been approved for esports proposals by Mr. Brenton Jet for the total of thirty six thousand, seventy seven dollars and fifty one cent for the ten stations and the eleven computer stations and everything that's on these sheets for, for the esports. Thank you. All right, new business, trick or treat, treating on Halloween.
What City Council desires, I think that CDC's recommending that we do not have door to door trick or treating, but still the decision is up to City Council as to what we're gonna do. We are having the Fright Fest on the square that day, so that may be a place of trick or treating, but some folks may still want to do it, so what you, what you're designing with that. We've had three or four phone calls already in the last, we're gonna allow trick or treating on.
Okay. Well, I just don't, this is, I like what you said, the mayor, if she shouldn't see mandated, you're in a mess. How are we gonna stop families from trick or treating? I mean, if they want to go to, and most of them now travel and take the kids from relative relatives, or they go to the organized activities, I mean, I don't see what, how alone would be in that.
I follow that up, but I kind of agree with you, especially if we're allowing the changers to host the event on the square, it makes no sense.
I think we can encourage everybody to come to the event on the square and wear your mask, your Halloween mask. But again, as we've said before, I mean, it's gonna be hard to pull up the closed doors and say, you know, you're not supposed to be trick treating.
I just don't think the city.
I think it's up to the individual, if they don't, then they can turn the light off and I have, please.
Mayor and Council, I don't have a personal opinion on this, but we've gotten lots of calls and comments asking for the city's direction as to, and we always get every year, what time is trick or treat, what night is trick or treat, and with the COVID, I think it'd be best if we do make some sort of statement, or y'all say something to say, you know, if you're gonna trick or treat, do it on the thirty first from six to eight or whatever the time might be, just so that we have some direction to give folks.
And I would include your idea about your wife, and that's a.
Yeah, of course, and I would suggest that if, you know, the citizens of Darlington don't want someone coming to your house, just turn your outside light off, and if they're not invited to come, they don't have to answer the door and give me the candy. As we've said, typically, we suggest that trick or treating is six o'clock till eight o'clock PM, six PM to eight PM. But we'll be having Fright Fest, so we would like to invite everybody to come, it's free, and the rides are extra charges, but, you know, we'll have plenty of candy and stuff down there for everybody, trick or treat fireworks and all there, to keep your social distance, again, as Nancy has stated, that will be spread way out, so, you know.
Then just a statement, saying, you know, practice safely, if you wanna trick or treat during daylight hours, and then you're all invited to downtown.
If, so if they want to trick or treat, we would suggest that that would be from six PM to eight PM, but we, we strongly suggest that they participate in the Fright Fest, where we'll have plenty of candy for everybody.
Let's make it early in the sixth, daylight.
It'll still be daylight then.
Yeah, okay, right.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, Lisa?
I just wanted to clarify, if you're saying earlier, you want to do four to six, or six to eight, or five to six, I just, I just want to have some direction.
Historically, what have we done? I don't ever remember.
I would say six to eight, it's typically six to eight.
We've typically done six to eight. I know that sometimes the real little one will come out earlier.
And that's what I was saying, that I.
And I know the changers event is from two to seven thirty.
So we've got plenty of activity for them, so. Well, since, so we've got plenty of activity for them, so I mean, if I want to, if I want to stand at my door with a mask on at two o'clock and then people get candy, they can, that's not a prerogative, but we would, we would suggest that six o'clock, eight o'clock would be time frame.
Well, let's do it, but let's just put it back, please, one second. I mean, because if we want them to come downtown, and we've got downtown ends at, at the seven-thirty hour, right? So we wouldn't want them out and behind that, that's what I'm saying. So let's, um, that's why I'm saying five early, five.
About five AM.
Five PM to eight PM?
We're doing suggestions, we're doing suggestions anyway, so. Five PM to eight PM. Do the suggestion. All right. Any, uh, questions for the department heads? Do you have any questions for the department?
As my fellow councilman pointed out, I should have made my comments at this point, but so I will repeat them.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any, uh, council comments? All right, well, I'll comment. So that on public record, the citizens will know that as of October first, their rates went up. We hear a lot that the citizens, the council is not doing their job and so forth. Um, I try to make sure that everybody knows that this council, all of them sitting up here with me and myself, do all that we can to create a positive atmosphere for our town. And we're here to make sure that we correct any issues that are going on in our city. Uh, drainage problems, we know that are an issue, roads being paved and so forth. Uh, lots of issues that we have that we're trying to always correct and make better. Uh, bring more businesses in, more residents in, and, uh, we're all working hard for that. Um, we're not here to, uh, to raise fees, to hurt people, um, you know. And so I ask that the citizens give us time to correct matters that have been going on for years. Uh, drainage issues are, have been passed on for a long time. We have made good efforts with the DOT. Uh, the news reporters do not always clarify, but a lot of our roads are DOT owned. The drains assigned them are DOT owned. They collect the taxes on those DOT owned roads. We do not collect the taxes on them. But our people, our department heads over here, Alex and the crew, go out and clean these drains. And, um, go out and try to make, um, our roads and streets and drains better with what we have. We were told the other day that we have a back truck that they bought two years ago. That the only other people in the area that have a back truck are Myrtle Beach, Sumter, and Columbia. Uh, we're not Myrtle Beach, Sumter, or Columbia. We're Darlington, which is a lot smaller, but we're strong. And we are out doing, uh, a lot. Um, we have already approved, and they're starting, what's the date they're starting the roads, October, next Monday. Next Monday, they'll be starting, um, industrial paving, we're starting paving approximately eighteen, eighteen roads. Two roads, additional roads that will possibly be given to the county that they'll be taking care of, which will make twenty roads. The DOT has stepped up to the plate and is willing to take care of Will Street family after all the collapses, which will make twenty-one roads. Uh, they're also going to take care of Russell Street, which will make twenty-two roads. And my understanding, Reed Street, and I think they just paved another one. So we, in the city of Darlington, before the end of this year, we will have about twenty-four roads paved. So I would say, if we do nothing else, the rest of the four years, we have accomplished a lot. But we will do a lot more the rest of the years, the three years that I'm in. Uh, because I believe in this council, we're working together to strive to make it better. We've already done and accomplished a lot. So I ask the citizens of Darlington, and then since we just spent thirty-six thousand dollars on esports, we all believe in Facebook. I ask the citizens of Darlington to please be positive on Facebook because Facebook is seen everywhere. And when you talk about our town, talk positively about our town. Because I will be very loved with you. I make six hundred dollars a month, and I work twenty-four seven to do this job, and I give it back. The people sitting up here with me, I don't know what they make, they make less than six hundred dollars a month clearly. And this is what we do to devote our time and effort to make the town better. And we're making great progress, and I'm very proud to be on this council with you and, and work with all of y'all. And thank you for your efforts. Uh, I think we've just about agreed on everything, um, as we voted for the last nine months. So I ask the citizens of Darlington to give us some more time and believe in what we do and step up to the plate with us. And let's make our town the best it can be. I would like to thank NASCAR for coming into town a second time. Uh, also, uh, I believe next year will be twenty-five years if I'm not wrong with that, of having a second race. So, uh, a lot of great things are coming. Uh, so, um, that's my comment. Thank you. All right, um, executive session for the recreational ball fields, uh, design. Uh, the city of Darlington may or may not vote after closed executive session. Uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion that we. Make a motion that we move on to the second session.
Barker, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Banks?
Hi.
Mr. Nels?
Hi.
Thank you. Hope you have a good night.